Good evening. I want to welcome you to the Wednesday, February 22, 2023, regular meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Elan.
Present.
Commissioner Ervin, excused. Commissioner Hirschbein, excused. Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Marutzi.
Here.
Vice Chair Roberts.
Present.
And Chair Wermuth.
Present.
We have a quorum. Five members present.
Thank you. Can I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Our agenda was available for public access at the City Hall Bulletin Board by nine o'clock PM on Thursday, February 16, and was posted on the city's website as required by established policies and procedures.
Thank you. I would take a motion to accept the agenda. Before I do that, I want to mention that Item 3A, when we get to it, we will not hear that tonight. We've had a request to continue to a date certain, and I believe it will be a motion when we get to 3A. Am I correct?
Just to clarify, it will be a date uncertain.
A date uncertain.
Yes. The applicant will return at a future date.
But to clarify, we will not be discussing that item tonight, only continuing it.
Right. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. The next item is public comment. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on Consent Calendar and other agenda items and items that are in our general jurisdiction. Speakers will have three minutes. Testimony for public hearing may be offered at this time or at the time of a hearing, and that would be on Item 2A. People who want to speak on Items 3A and 4A are directed to do so now. Just to let people here in the audience know that Item 3A, the request by GRIT development on behalf of Westman for a permit for construction of a road, has been pulled, will be pulled from our agenda. The public hearing is open. Are there members of the public who wish to speak?
I'd like to speak.
You have the floor.
Honorable Chair, Commissioners and staff, as you advised, to speak under public comment on Item 4A. I'm speaking as the, Troy Hubner, resident of Palm Springs. I'm speaking as the owner's representative. First, I'd like to commend staff on a very comprehensive report, but I would like to reiterate a few points. As context, I attended both ARC meetings on this item, and as I understand the process, only two public hearings before the ARC are permitted. Thus, a denial necessitates an appeal to the decision to the Planning Commission. At the January 17 ARC meeting, the applicant had completed three of the four outstanding items to the satisfaction of the ARC, except for the requested minor modification to the front and rear setbacks, the 15-foot rear setback being the major issue. As the issue was not resolved in the course of the meeting, the project was denied rather than conditioned. Following discussions with the owner, the submitted plan has moved the house forward to comply with the 15-foot rear setback, resulting in a minor redesign of the front elevation to not encroach on the originally requested front setback modification to 12 foot 6 inches. The new design requests a setback modification to 14 foot 5 inches, an improvement of nearly 2 feet. It is also my understanding that the staff report was based on a preliminary plan listing the setback at 14 foot 3 inches, rather than, as I understand it, the measured actual of 14 foot 5. As the new design meets all of the ARC requirements, I support the staff's recommendation and ask that the ARC denial be overturned and the project approved. Thank you for your time.
Are there other members of the public who wish to speak?
I see no other members with their hands raised than no one else. Oh, I'm sorry.
We do. Is Mr. Rich?
It looks like Mr. Scott Connolly is looking to speak. Oops.
Yes.
Mr. Connolly, you may be muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I'm speaking on 3A. That I'm opposed to this application based on potential negative environmental impacts to threatened and endangered species. Access to the undeveloped hillside lots should not be approved prior to the vetting and determining if these plots can be developed. In the letter, in 2005, citizens of Palm Springs spoke out against hillside development and prevailed in the special action regarding hillside action, hillside development. This hillside area is habitat for endangered bighorn sheep and other threatened species. These critical environmental issues, along with all the potential negative impacts of hillside development, needs to be considered prior to any incursion into this area. A permit should not be granted without environmental review that considers not only the sheep habitats, but the entirety of what was originally proposed to the development, as the Camino del Monte. Why would you separate building homes and building driveways? The homes are not built, for whatever reason, then you have a road to nowhere. So I would urge you to reject this plan, and thank you for your consideration at our mutual present.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You might want to repeat to the people who have just joined us that Item 3A has been pulled.
Item 3A will be, has been pulled by the applicant until a date uncertain. Thank you for your testimony, though. And you're, you're welcome to speak on the item if you so choose.
Okay, I'm fine. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? I see Candace. I see a hand from Candace Khan. You have.
Okay, I unmuted. You said Item 3 had been withdrawn. Is that the proposal for the road?
Yes, that has been withdrawn by the applicant. It's been postponed until a date uncertain.
Okay, I still would like to, I wrote a letter today to the Planning Commission objecting to to this road. I totally object to the road and the development of this property because of the wildlife. One of the things that I mentioned in my letter to the Planning Commission is, if you look at LA, there was a study done, and over 300 mountain lions have been killed by vehicles there. And while we're not that large, still roads and developments like that push wild animals away from that area. And I don't think we want to lose our bighorn sheep. They're a big tourist attraction. I ride my horse up there on the Licken Trail, and I also hike up in that area. And tourists are always up there, and they're enjoying the scenery and enjoying seeing our wildlife. So I don't think we want to lose that. That's, that's my story.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? You can either speak now or raise your hand. Seeing no one else, thank you very much for your testimony, and the public hearing is closed, and we will move forward. We have nothing on our consent calendar. The first item before us is a public hearing, Item 2A, a request by the Erolic Group on behalf of Lugus Circa LLC for a tentative parcel map to subdivide an existing parcel into two separate parcels located at 2508 Anza Trail. A staff report, please.
One second. Okay, can you see the screen?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. The applicant is proposing a lot split on 2005 Anza Trail. The project site is surrounded on all sides by existing single-family homes and takes access off Anza Trail. There's currently an existing single-family residence located near the center of the property. The structure is considered, sorry, is considered a Class 3 structure, which means it has the potential to be designated historic in the future. The lot is proposed to be split into two parcels. We have Lot 1 and Lot 2, both of which comply with the lot size requirements of this zone. Additionally, the lot split will occur where that yellow line is. It's located about 10 feet away from the Class 3 structure on Lot 2, allowing the building to comply with setbacks and development standards of the R1B zone. In order to allow the preservation of this Class 3 structure, Lot 1 will be substandard in depth by 10 feet due to a required right-of-way designation from the city. So they're moving the property line in 10 feet. An AMM application is required for this substandard depth dimension and will be reviewed and approved administratively. Lastly, I want to draw your attention to the proposed easement that will take place on the east property line. It will run through Lot 1 and give access to Lot 2, so they have, you know, access to their lot. The applicant, sorry. So staff does recommend approval subject to the attached conditions of approval. This concludes my report, and the applicant is available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Elan?
Yes, I just have one question, and I'm sorry, I should have requested this in advance when I read my packet. But it says a copy of the disclosure form is attached to the report, and I don't have, it was not included in my packet. Alex, can you just tell us the names of the principals involved?
Yes, let me see if it's here. Sorry that it was not included.
It might have been in other people's packets. It just wasn't in mine.
No, it's possible that it wasn't even included at all. Maybe we can have the applicant speak to that. I want to say it's the Luga Circa, who is the owner of the property. But maybe we can just double-check with the applicant.
We can have the applicant speak to it, Commissioner, and in the meantime, Alec, perhaps you can pull it up from the N Drive so that we ensure we have that information before the closure of the hearing.
Yes.
Are there any other questions of staff? Seeing none, the public hearing is open. The applicant has 10 minutes. Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sorry, I was muted. My name is Bruce Erlich. I am representing the applicant on this particular piece of property. The property is owned by an LLC, but the LLC really is representative of a single person, Ms. Jane Townsend. She's the property owner, and she will be living on the, intends to be living on the rear lot in, with a house that she's looking to construct. Basically, we've been working over a good period of time with planning, engineering, and the fire department, and we have responded to all of their concerns in relationship to the tentative map, as can be seen. The hammerhead on the tentative map for the drive really is at the request of the fire department so that they have maneuverability in terms of dealing with the, with the rear lot. So that property will, that easement will be granted as requested. And as to the MMA, the Planning Department is in receipt of that application. I actually spoke to Alex this afternoon, and will be calling her tomorrow to pay the fee for the MMA after, after this hearing, so that that can move forward as well. So at this point, it's, it's a straightforward two-lot subdivision, and we are here to ask questions, answer questions, should any be needed to be answered. Thank you, and thank you to the Planning Department.
Are there any other members, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, this comes back to the applicant. He has indicated that he's available for questions. Commissioner Elan, you have your hand up, and then Commissioner Miller.
I just have a quick question for clarification. The applicant, in your project description, you indicate that two new homes will be built on the property. Are you proposing to build one on Parcel 1 and one on Parcel 2, or?
The, the intent at this point is a home on Parcel 1 and an additional home on Parcel 2.
So Parcel 2 will have two homes?
Parcel 2 will have the, yeah, the existing property will remain, will likely be remodeled to some extent, but.
And another home will be constructed on Parcel 2, or you're just the existing home will remain?
No, no, a new home will also be constructed on Parcel 2.
Okay. Thank you.
And that will all occur in conformance with Palm Springs' current code as it relates to residential properties.
New state law. Okay.
Commissioner Miller, you had a question?
Well, my question was partially answered by Commissioner Elan's question to the applicant, because I heard him say Jane Townsend was going to build a new house on Lot 2, I guess. I want to confirm whether you know at this point, is the existing house on Lot 2 going to be preserved at this point?
It is my understanding, and I certainly don't want to make a final commitment, but it is my understanding that the the existing house is not in the best shape or condition that it should be, but the intention is to, the initial intention is to retain that house. That's why we've laid out the property line to allow the proper setback from that house, from the new lot. So the intention is to remodel, re-bring that in the conformance, and you know, as I say, there's probably some structural and architectural problems that will need to be dealt with there, but the intent is to retain that house.
Sort of a follow-up question, perhaps to staff as much as the applicant. If it's determined in your due diligence, in looking at the existing house, that it's determined that demolition is the likely route, if demolition occurs, then you don't need the reduction in lot depths. So I don't know if there's a mechanism that in the future, if the structure is going to be demolished, if they add the required 10 feet onto Lot 1 such that it doesn't need the reduction in depth. I don't know if there's a mechanism that can kind of follow that through the process, but that's what came to my mind when you were talking about demolishing the existing structure.
Yeah, I think that that's a good question. I don't think that we could sort of condition the AMM such that it would sort of sunset if they choose not to pursue the preservation of the structure. I think from our perspective, we want, certainly want to leave that door open to allow that process to play out, like you're saying, go through the due diligence process and determine whether or not it warrants preservation. And so at this point, going through the AMM process and coordination with this makes sense from our perspective, but we could certainly work with them in the future to reallocate the subdivision if, you know, that makes sense at that time.
Madam Chair. Again, just a, oh, sorry.
Sorry. No, go ahead, Commissioner.
I was going to say, I'm, I'm not concerned either way. I just would, would not suggest that this would need to come back to us if, in the future, they demolish the house on Lot 2 such that they can now expand Lot 1. Is there a way that we can cover our pending approval tonight, presuming it's going to be approved, such that that line could be adjusted 10 feet without having to come back to us?
Administratively. I don't know that that is a process that we have contemplated. I, I might look to Mr. Priest to see if, if that can be done administratively.
Before, before we go there, if this is the last question of the applicant, I'd like to close the public hearing and take this before staff. So I don't see any other commissioners raising questions. Oops, we do have one of the applicant. Commissioner Roberts? Do you have a question?
Mine is not a question. I just wanted to move approval on this once the question is answered.
Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing if we can have an answer to that question for Mr. Priest.
Certainly, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, good evening. I, I have not heard of such a condition in my experience, but one thing I wanted to point out contextually is this building is a Class 3 building. By operation of the code, it's now within the historic preservation scheme of the code, which means that if it were going to be demolished or a major alteration, as the code defines it, you've got to get HSPB approval for that. A demolition is not necessarily a foregone conclusion of this building. HSPB may conclude that it is suitable for demolition, but there would have to be that review process first. So my recommendation would be, as staff is suggesting, to move ahead with the lot, with the tentative map and the AMM that staff would process, because we don't know what's going to happen with that building. It may be demolished, it may be altered, it may not.
And to answer Commissioner Miller's question on the administrative process, I just got clarification that a, a lot line adjustment is done administratively. So if in the future the building goes through the process, it is to be demolished, and we want to reallocate some of the, the lot area, that is done through an administrative application.
Yeah, it would not have to come back to PC. No.
Thank you.
We have a motion. Commissioner Roberts?
I just, I move approval as presented.
I will second, I will second with a friendly amendment. Planning condition number four says that the applicant must apply for an AMM prior to finishing the tentative parcel map. I'd like to change that to say they must gain approval for an AMM prior to finalizing the map.
Is that necessary if they're already bringing it forward? Will it either be denied or granted? It sounds like granting approval before.
If it's not approved, there's no reason for that action that we're taking tonight.
I, I.
In my, yeah, belief.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I, I understand what Commissioner Elaine is saying. I think you, you could amend that to say they must obtain or get approval of the AMN before proceeding with the project. If there isn't an AMM, it's not going to meet minimum setback requirements, and that's going to be a problem for the project. But I think we can condition it rather than apply for the AMM or, you know, seek an AMM. We could say you have to obtain it, you have to get it, and then you can move forward. So however the commission would like to work that.
That's fine. I accept that amendment. That's fine.
Yeah, and Vice Chair Roberts, I think it's an order of operations matter. So we have not granted the AMM pending this decision, so we just want to make it clean and.
That's fine. As long as it's not adding confusion, that's fine.
I see no hands for discussion. Can you call the roll, please?
Joanne?
Yes.
Can you call the roll, please?
There we go. Commissioner Elaine?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Marutzi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Chair Wermuth?
Yes.
Okay.
The item has been approved unanimously. Item 3A, a request by GRIT development on behalf of John Westman for a major development permit for the construction of a seven- of John Westman for a major development permit for the construction of a seven, 730-foot linear extension of South Camino Monte Road private roadway, providing access to existing hillside lots located at South Camino Road. Can I have a motion to continue this to a date uncertain?
So moved.
Okay, Joanne, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Elaine?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Maruzzi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Chair Wermuth?
Yes.
Okay. Item four is the first appeal we have had of, by Pinnacle Palm Springs LLC of the decision of the Architectural Review Committee to deny a major architectural application for a proposal to construct a 3,626 square foot house on a hillside lot and administrative minor modification to reduce the minimum front yard setback located at 1711 Pinnacle Point Lot One. Zone PDD 79, a staff report, please, and then a report, just a comment by our attorney as to what our purview is on appeals.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are you able to see the screen?
Yes, thank you.
Great. All right. So as you mentioned, the, you read into the record, the appeal, which is from Pinnacle Point LLC. Just to give the planning commission some contextual as to where we're discussing. The Pinnacle Point subdivision is located in South Palm Springs off of Bogert Trail. And the planning commission has reviewed in the past several houses in this subdivision, including, and I'll follow my cursor, lot two, lot three, up farther up at the end of the cul-de-sac, lot seven, and lot 10. Planning Commission altered the zoning code to redo our architecture review process. The review of hillside houses was, was to be done by the Architecture Review Committee. So the planning commission has reviewed some houses i- in the subdivision. And the Architecture Review Committee reviewed lots 10 and now lot one, which is the lot that is in the red square. One thing I'd like to mention with this aerial up before the planning commission, you'll notice that the houses that are existing, the three homes at the very end of the cul-de-sac and the three new houses that are under construction, all have setback reductions. So in this hillside development, it is common that the planning commission and the ARC has granted a front yard setback reduction. So the Architecture Review Committee first reviewed the project in January, I'm sorry, December 5th of 2022. And they made the following comments, the house to meet a rear yard setback of 15 feet. Study the west-facing facade for solar control, greater solar control. The color scheme would to, is to be darker and then to revise some roof parapets on the front elevation and we'll go over each of these individually. The ARC then reviewed the project on January 17th for a second time. And as the applicant, Mr. Huber mentioned in his presentation at our public comments, they did meet the rear yard setback, they changed the color scheme to be darker, and they revised the roof parapets. One thing, when they were, when they moved the house out of the rear yard setback, it pushed the house farther forward. And the ARC denied that request for the setback reduction because of the encroachment, and that is where we are today. So the applicant i- in submitting the appeal has revised the design to meet the rear yard setback. A front yard architectural feature has been relocated. And this allows the house to be moved farther away from the front property line. As the applicant had mentioned, it's 14.5, not 14.3, so I'd like to make that correction. They, they are using the darker color scheme, which we'll show in just a minute, and then they revised the roof parapets. So this is the plan that the ARC reviewed on 117, and I'd like to show this box where the little hand is, that is the projection that pushed the house forward and had a 10-foot, 8-inch setback. And they met the rear yard setback of 15 feet. In the next slide, this is the plan that's before the planning commission for approval. They have moved the architectural projection to in front of the garage and to meet the 15-foot setback at the, at the projection, which leaves the very front of the house at 14-foot five. And they do eat the rear yard setback at 15. So when looking at, this is the 3D image that was first reviewed by the ARC back in December. I'll point out a few features. They had white stacked stone. There was a large mass roof structure over the great room and the kitchen area in the main portion of the house. And then there was this architectural feature that projected into the front yard setback. Iteration was reviewed in January, they this still remained the projection. The white stone was replaced with a horizontal raked stucco. And then an extra parapet was added to reduce the massing of the great room roof. And then the iteration that's before the planning commission for review and approval is that the architectural projection has been moved to in front of the garage. And that reduces, or I'm sorry, increases the setback. And you'll see they still have the raked stucco and three windows have been added. In your packet, there's a floor plan if the planning commission would like to see a greater detail of what the interior of the house looks like. And the other item that the planning, or the ARC wanted the applicant to review on is the study of the eyebrow placement on the west-facing elevation. And in these drawings, the original previously reviewed was shorter, they lengthened the overhang on the west-facing facade to provide greater shade over the glass that faces west. The other comment was to change the color scheme to be darker. I have other drawings. This was the revised color scheme, which is a darker color palette. Also, the comments from 12, 5 review was that the parapets over the garage provide greater interest. The drawing on the bottom shows the larger mass and then the revised elevations were added, this parapet to break up the, the large massing. There's a roof plan in your packet. And looking at some drawings, this is once again, the proposal with the parapet, the increased overhang, and then the placement of the architectural element next to the garage. So in your packet, there are also 3D images of the house as we rotate around it. This is the glass facade that faces west. The applicant added a larger overhang to provide more shade. And moving forward through these plans, there is a section showing how this house relates to the constructed house on lot two. It sits 10 feet lower, so there'll be a series of step downs to where this house will be placed. You have a grading plan in your packet and also a landscape plan, which shows minimal landscaping, the use of the same types of acacia pellegrini trees, which are in, in the development itself and other succulents and cactus. So you, in your packet, there are findings in the conditions of approval that the staff feels that can be made. The AMM for front yard reduction of from 25 feet to 14.5 instead of 14.3. And staff is recommending that you approve the appeal and overturn the ARC denial and approve both the architectural design and the setback reductions. So in, in your packet, there was a series of photographs. If, if the commission would like to go through these, you see it's a flat lot overlooking Bogert Trail below. And this is a picture of the house that's adjacent to the, the proposed lot. So Chair, that concludes my report and I can answer any questions if you'd like.
Thank you. Before we have questions, can we just have the, our attorney talk about what our purview is on this? And then Vice Chair Roberts, I'll call on you next. Mr. Priest?
Hello, sorry. Okay, this is the question about the jurisdiction or was this a different question? I'm so smart.
Yes.
This evening, this is on appeal to the planning commission. This is a de novo appeal. Land use decisions are typically that. What that means is the planning commission can consider the evidence and the record and any additional information that has come out at this hearing, such as the redesign of the project. This is in contrast to the way the courts work. Usually in the court system, the court of appeal is limited to what the trial court got as evidence in their case. And then sometimes the court of appeal will remand it back to the trial court for additional evidence. That's not necessary here and it's not called out in the code either. The decision rests with the planning commission and staff would ask that the planning commission on this application.
So basically what you're saying is we can approve the appeal and we could probably add anything that we wanted to add if, with an approval or, or deny. Am I correct?
Yes, add some additional conditions provided they are supported by the facts and the record, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts, Vice Chair Roberts.
Thank you. This is for staff. I had asked staff to give us the original drawings, but I, I didn't Glenn, get to ask you if the ARC had given any reason for asking the applicant to change out the stone facade on the front of the house to stucco.
You're asking the reason why they did that?
Yeah, did they give a reason for that?
I, I think as the, the color scheme got darker, when it was the original color scheme, which was lighter, and I can pull those up if you want to look at them. They felt that the darker would not go as well with the stacked stone.
Okay.
White stacked stone.
Okay, thank you. That, that concludes my questions.
Commissioner Maruzzi, you have a question? And then Commissioner Miller?
Well, I actually did have a question. Was the ARC made aware of the setback reductions that we as the planning commission have approved in the past?
Yes, they, they have been. However, the other houses were not pushed that far forward.
How far forward were they pushed in relation to this one?
15 feet. And this was the iteration they saw in January was a 10.
And what is it now?
14 feet and a 14 feet, five inches.
So in the past, we've approved 15? And now it's 14.5?
Yes. The, the ARC did not have the ability to see the application that's before you or the revised, so they did not see the 14-foot five.
The version that they denied commissioner was 10 feet.
All right, so now it's 14.5, we've approved 15 in the past. If it had gone back to the ARC, most likely they would have approved it because it's only a half foot away from what we've approved in the past. Sounds like me.
Based on, could be how it would have worked out, yes.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Miller, you have your hand up.
And it, and it's really following up, I think, on where Commissioner Maruzzi was going. If the ARC wasn't at the end of their available meetings, they would have seen this revised plan. Is that fair to say?
Yes, it would have gone back and we would have recommended approval also.
Okay, so I, I'm certainly ready to, to act on this and certainly in support of this.
Commissioner Roberts.
I'm ready to act as well. I have one question, Chair. I'd like to ask the applicant if they would prefer to go back to the stone facade on the front. I think that's a nicer finish and fits in well with the house and the area. I'd like to give them that choice if they'd prefer to.
So Brian Foster is here and Roy could also speak too.
Mr. Foster?
Hi. Yes, at this point, maybe we could condition it either way, hopefully. I think the client has already approved the raked stucco, so we're, we're favorable either way, if that's okay with the planning commission.
That's fine. I'd like to see him do it though. I think it really adds to the house. It gives it some character and quality.
Yeah, we, we thought this, the stone is a nice feature considering the terrain and the rock and, and surrounding area there. So it's something that was, is appreciated to have that option. So we thank you for that.
You, you're welcome, sir. So Chair, I'm ready with Commissioner Miller to move on this.
I, I have a friendly amendment. Is your motion to, to approve the changes with the stone or with an alternate?
Are you?
I'm asking.
You made the, I think you made the motion, right?
I, I thought you were, someone is making the motion. I'd like to know what the motion is.
If you want, I can certainly make the motion and I do have a question though, or a comment on Commissioner Roberts. I don't have a problem with the stone as a material, but I think the reason, I'm guessing the reason why the white stacked stone was not looked on favorably by the ARC is because it's so much brighter than the native desert terrain, which is so prevalent in this community. So if we were to allow stacked stone, I would like it to not be bright white, at least be more of an earth tone. And I don't know if Commissioner Roberts, you have any objection to that being a sort of a sub, a subset of that concern?
I think that's fine. I think, you know, they've proven that they are good with colors on these houses. And so I, I'm fine with your amendment or to give them the choice, whichever you prefer. I'll, I'll just follow your action on this.
And before you do that, one question, I would like this to be returned by staff to the ARC, not to ask them to do anything, but to explain what we did. So that staff would go back to the ARC with, this was the decision and this is why it was made.
Chair, can that just be in the form of a report at their meeting?
I, I just, we don't have a procedure yet, so I would like a report to go back to them.
We can certainly do that.
To add it.
So I second Commissioner Miller's motion.
And is the report added?
I, as the motion maker, I don't have any objection to that, as long as it's not a formal action of the ARC. It's just a, a verbal report as to what the planning commission did.
I accept that.
Fine. I'll call the roll, please, unless there are comments. Joanne?
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Elaine?
Yes.
Commissioner Maruzzi?
Yes.
Chair Wermuth?
Yes.
The motion passes. And I think we are at the end of our business of planning commission reports, requests and comments. Are there any? Seeing none, is there a planning director's report?
Well, I know that I owe some information from our last meeting that I've not had a chance to gather yet, so I will attempt to do that for our next meeting. I did just want to provide an update on the discussion that occurred at city council last night regarding, you know, the conversations that we've had previously around the lifting of the emergency ordinance at the local level and the expected lifting of the emergency, state of emergency at the, the state level as well and sort of how that plays. emergency, state of emergency at the, the state level as well and sort of how that plays into meetings going forward. The conversation was, was interesting in that the, the emergency order was lifted. However, the council did direct that the Senate bill that was enacted earlier in the pandemic, allowing remote meetings and telecommunication, teleconferencing meetings to occur as an emergency measure could continue throughout the rest of the year. I guess there are provisions in that bill that say essentially if social, we're not saying distancing anymore. I'm going to look to Attorney Priest to clarify the terminology.
Do you want me to just take the baton here really quick?
Why don't you just go ahead, Jim? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Yeah, the, and, and Mr. Hadwin, please, you were at the council meeting, so please fill in any gaps that I have here. But yeah, the city council opted to continue using the AB 361 teleconferencing process. That's the one that we've been operating under for the last couple of years since COVID came. The council could technically set different rules for their subordinate boards and commissions. They have chosen not to. Everybody's just going to follow the same rule. So they're encouraging in-person participation when possible, but they've left the option open to continue under AB 361. This provision is not the best written in the, in the Brown Act, but basically even if the statewide declaration of emergency expires, the city until the end of this year could still use those teleconferencing rules as we've been doing now, provided that every 30 days, the city is still making these findings that the local agency continues to recommend physical distancing. We've, we've changed it. Social distancing is so last year. So now it's physical distancing. And that appears to be the direction the council is taking is that every 30 days, we're going to re-up these findings that physical distancing is still recommended by the city of Palm Springs as the local agency. And that will allow us to write out AB 361 to the end of the year. And then we would defer back to the other rules besides 361. As we talked about at the last meeting, the old teleconferencing rule that's been around for 30 years, we can still use that. And then AB 2449, as we talked about, there's a couple of additional exceptions that are commissioner or officer specific, where somebody can opt out of a meeting and teleconference in by, for just cause or for an emergency personal circumstance. The, the trick with those is that unlike AB 361, a quorum of the agency, a quorum of the commission still has to be physically present within the jurisdiction. So these additional exceptions that 2449 has going forward after 2024 will be very specific to commissioners on their individual circumstances. But for the moment, AB 361 will still continue to apply for the rest of the year. And that will continue to allow us to do what we're doing now, which is all the commission can still teleconference.
So with all of that said, I think we have a decision to make tonight, or the commission has a decision to make tonight on how you would like to treat our March meetings. Until we have any additional information or the city council decides not to re-up those findings, I think you do have the option to sort of remain status quo as we have or to return to in-person meetings. And before you discuss that and give me direction, I will say at this point, we have nothing on our agenda for our March 8th meeting. So we are going to be canceling that one. So this would apply beginning March 22nd. And I'm sorry if you can hear my dog's noise.
Madam Chair, before we have further discussion, can I just please get a clarification from Mr. Hadwin? Did the council direct the other night that all the boards and commissions were going to do the same thing as the council or that each ward and commission can opt to?
They declined, they declined to give direction to specific boards and commissions and just kind of left it at that. What they did do was, was direct the city attorney and staff to sort of look at coming back with a potential ordinance to put some consistency around that. But, you know, it's not clear when that would return. So I think this may shift again in the spring or later in the spring, or again, if they, they choose not to re-up the finding that we need to maintain physical distancing. But, you know, for now, I think the option is with the board, as I understand it, with the committee. So I don't know if that was super clear or a little ambiguous, but how are you all feeling about March?
Preferences, people who would like to have March still as a telecommute, just raise their hands.
Either way, for me.
And people who would rather meet in person.
All right, I'll go either way.
I, I'm what JR said.
We have two people who'd rather meet on telecommute, two people who don't care and one person who'd like to meet in person.
And two people who aren't here tonight to weigh in.
Who aren't here tonight. Possibly, why don't we, my suggestion would be that we wait until the other two people are here and we take this up for April.
Or, or Chair, maybe staff can just send out a survey to the whole commission on whether they'd like to meet in person or not. You know, with a checkbox, yes, doesn't matter or no.
I, I, I just want to be careful about that. I, I don't know that we necessarily want to be developing a collective concurrence of the commission outside of the Brown Act meeting. That's my one concern there. If, if we don't have direction from the commission tonight, my recommendation, Mr. Hadwin, what's your thought? Is that we would continue to operate status quo right now under AB 361, at least for the March 22nd meeting. And then when we have more commissioners, perhaps new policy could be made at that point.
I, I would agree. I would say let's target doing this for March 22nd. And it's possible by that time, we'll have a little more clarity on, on sort of the shape that the ordinance that will be returning to the city council is taking. And we can have a discussion that night on how we want to treat April. So we're kicking the can down the road a little bit, but we will plan on March 22nd being in this format.
Sounds good, Jim.
I do not at this point have any other updates for you all. Thank you.
I think the only one is that the city council unanimously approves the extension on the build, the, the condo building in what?
Block B.
Block B.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. That was considered by the council last night and they did unanimously determine to follow the planning commission's recommendation to, to grant the extension to block B. So there wasn't a lot of discussion. I think that they took a similar position to you all in understanding that the circumstances with the state Department of Industrial Relations is, is certainly out of the control of that developer and that the city is a party to that discussion and so that the extension was valid and warranted.
With that, thank you all for a lovely meeting and a lovely meeting. And I would move that at 6:24, we adjourn until March?
22nd.
March 22nd. Good night all.
Night everybody.
Night.